...intensities and different roads that lead to conclusions. May we combine clarity of mind and kindness of heart? And may we be impartial without bending to strong personalities? May we sacrifice self-interest for the good of the whole? May we do our work with love and clarity and the vision for the benefit of those we serve?
Thank you.
So, call the regular meeting of May 16th to order. And I would ask Ms. Robertson if we have any additional late items that weren't published in the amended agenda?
There was one additional late item, which is an email from Robert and Hillary Conabear, and it's regarding the development variance permit on the agenda tonight for 545 Jubilee Street. And so it can be considered under the reports of committees, item 6.1.1. And I did circulate a copy to council as well.
Okay, I see it on my desk here. Okay. Okay, so I will ask for approval of the agenda as amended. So moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? That motion's carried. So I would like to have, there's several minutes to adopt. So we have the council minutes of April 18th and the motion to adopt. Moved and seconded. Any discussions, your admissions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the motion carries. Item 4.2, which is the May 2nd special council minutes, and they are there for adoption from May 2nd. So mover and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the motion carries. We also have the May 2nd Committee of the Whole minutes, and they're also there for adoption.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, the motion carries. And we have the special committee of the whole minutes for May 9th, and also for adoption. Mover, seconded, thank you. Discussion on those minutes? All those in favor? Opposed, the motion carries. So we move immediately to the report of the chief administrative officer, and I believe you circulated a written version of it, Mr. Dervitai, but if you'd like to touch on the highlights?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll just touch on a few of them. The Second Street Capital Project, their request for quotations closed on May 13th, and staff are in the process of reviewing those two proposals that were received. The special council meeting will be scheduled for June 6th prior to the committee meeting toward the contract. Coronation traffic study was awarded in April and is well underway. We expect to have the consultant present their results to the June council meeting.
That will be at a council meeting, not committee? Yes, okay.
This study reviews the pedestrian safety and options on coronation, particularly at the Festivus and St. Julian intersections. The draft zoning bylaw continues to have internal reviews, and will do so over the summer months prior to presenting to Committee of the Whole meeting. Some new developments, applications have been received that'll likely take priority over the zoning bylaw and push the date off a little bit. For their marketing strategy, the meetings have been held with the BIA to jointly discuss the strategy and prioritize its implementation. These meetings have proceeded quite well, and tourism meeting will be scheduled in the near future to confirm next steps before bringing the strategy to the June Committee of the Whole meeting. And lastly, just wanted to make the notices, the property tax notice will be mailed out on May 20th, and newspaper ads will advise taxpayers to contact the city if they do not receive their notices before the end of May.
Okay. And there are a few other things, if you get a chance to peruse it through the meeting, we'll take questions to the C E O at the end of the meeting. Okay, so we move on to reports of committees. We have the May 2nd, 2016, and I assume this is the Committee of the Whole reports? Is that correct? Okay. Normally, because this is related to development, normally the chair would present those, but if I can do it? They're quite lengthy. Okay, thanks. Okay, so we have item 6.1.1, which is the development variance permit 2016-02 for 545 Jubilee Street. And there is quite a long recommendation. I'll read off the main parts of it. The council approved development variance permit application number D V P 2016-02 for the proposed development of a three-story building with six dwelling units at 545 Jubilee Street and 211 First Street. As attached to the May 16th report of the manager of planning, to omit the following: and the setbacks to the variance are to vary section 7.5B5 of the zoning bylaw number 1540 for the portions of the development shown in the attachments. First, to vary the front yard setback from 7.5 meters to 1.78 meters for the proposed building. Item 2, to vary the exterior east side setback from six meters to 1.8 meters from the proposed building. And 3, to vary the rear setback from 7.5 meters to 2.1 meters for the proposed building. Goes on to parking variances, to vary table 1 and 2 of the off-street parking and loading bylaw number 3098 as follows: to vary the required number of parking spaces from 1.2 spaces per unit (eight spaces) to 1 space per unit (six spaces). Item 2, to vary the maneuvering aisle width from 7.3 meters to 6.78 meters. And 3, to vary section 4.6A of the off-street parking and loading bylaw number 3098 to omit 100% of the proposed parking to be designated specifically for small cars. And that the development variance permit 2016-02 contain the following conditions be met prior to issuance of the building permit, the proposed development. Provision of a statutory right-of-way for one meter of one-meter lane widening, or sorry, of the right-of-way for the one-meter lane widening from the entrance to the lane and to the proposed driveway. And for a .5-meter setback widening along the northern four meters of the east side of the property. And item 2, provision of a security deposit in amount of 125% of the estimated cost for the off-site improvements to the sidewalk and lane. And that is the recommendation. Is there a mover for that?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Does staff want to just give another overview? I see we have something up on the screen, so would they just like to give a bit more detailed overview for the public watching? Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. The development permit application also...
Mr. Paddy, you have to use the microphone. You can actually take it off the stand if you like and hold it, then that you might be able to look at the screen more closely. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start with the development permit, just to give a bit of context to the development variance permit, which is included at the end of this presentation. The location plan, you can see that it's Jubilee, the subject property is outlined in red here at the corner of First Street and Jubilee. This property has an approximate area of 653 square meters, so reasonable-sized lot. Used to zoning, I'll start with zoning, this property's in the RM4, so that's our multifamily townhouse-style zone. Here, we can see the property, which in this photo shows that there are buildings on the site. There are no longer buildings on this site, they've both been demoed, and so the site is clear and the lots consolidated. This parcel on the northern half of the site has a total width of approximately 18 meters by 13 meters, so approximately 245 square meters. So, on its own, a little bit too small to support development, even for a single-family dwelling would be difficult, given the setback requirements required within the zone. And so now that it's consolidated with this lot, we have an approximate frontage of 18 by about 36.5 meters in depth. The zoning bylaw considers this area on First Street as the front yard, so when we talk about setbacks to the building, and when we're talking about front yards, it's from the First Street on the south end, and this being the external side yard, and off the lane is considered the rear, and then of course, an internal side yard. Here we can see a few views of the property. Here you'll see the existing house still on the property. Again, here as well, and a view from the east, you can see an existing building there which is no longer there. Here you can get an idea of the scale of the site, the size of it. You can see in the background here, the multifamily building that Curtis Stretch built a number of years ago, that is complimentary, sort of, has a multifamily-style building, which will be roughly equivalent to the sort of scale of the building that is proposed on this site. As well, immediately across the street on Jubilee, there's a recently completed project for a five-unit building on two levels. Here we see the proposed site plan. The area in blue gives you an idea about the area of the building, which is required, or which encroaches into the setback requirement for the property. You can see that on the front, because this being first, we've got a front yard setback of 1.78 meters, and along the side, on the Jubilee side, it goes down to 1.8, and on the rear, 2.1. This area along the rear of the building is the rear yard and the area where the drive aisle is to be located. So this gives you an idea of the, sort of, some elevations of the building, to give you an idea of sort of form and character of it. I think the applicant's done a good job of articulating the building front and creating some visual interest with the addition of gables on the mid-story, and entrance features on each of the four internal units on the front. There's an additional entrance to the first unit, actually, off of Front Street. You can see that elevation here, and another entrance on the end of the building here. So for a total of six units, one, two here, two here, and then the final one right here. Here we see perspective, and this perspective came after the advisory design panel had a chance to review the proposal. The design panel made a number of recommendations, one of which was to create more visual interest in the building by articulating the building front to a greater degree. The applicant responded by popping out these gables on the front elevation to create some shadow line and relief along the frontage, as well to inset the entrances and create a little pop-out feature with these canopy structures over the doors, to create better articulation overall to the form of the building. In addition, the design panel requested some details about the landscaping, which includes a number of sort of native drought-tolerant species along the frontage, including ornamental cherry trees that you can see along the frontage. In addition to the landscaping, the applicant has also provided wood trellis-style fencing, and that's matched to the entrance structures, and also to the shingling and the end gables to introduce a lot of wood features into the building, and a bit of whimsy in the chain of the, each of the individual door colors to create a bit of additional visual interest. Here we see a landscaping plan. It's a simple landscaping plan, primarily lawn in these green sections, but with some nice pockets of plantings along either end, with the introduction of the ornamental cherry trees. A small, little area here for the refuse containers and recycling along this elevation on the lane for access from the lane. And you can see that access here is through from Front Street through the lane to make it easy to navigate from the front and through the back of the site, and into the individual parking spaces in each one of the units. Each unit in this development has its own individual parking space. Here, it more clearly shows the fence details along the frontage, fence number two, along the rear of the site, and matched by the garbage enclosure that we saw here in this portion of the site. It also shows us the drive aisle along the rear. This drive aisle has been reduced to 6.78 meters in order to accommodate small car access to the site, and maneuvering of small cars into each one of the individual parking spaces under the building. Here it shows an illustrative example of how maneuvering is afforded into the site and into the unit, and, well, I'm not sure where that car was placed there, but to show that there is a possibility for parking along the rear that would still allow for the passage of other vehicles through the drive aisle. So here's the recommendation. I won't read out the recommendation, you've already covered that. And prior to, I'll move into the development variance permit, which you've also read out the conditions of the development permit. Here, I've identified a little more clearly specifically where the variances are proposed, and I've expanded the view a little bit. So, item number one, to vary the front yard setback from 7.5 meters to 1.78 meters, and that's in this location on the southern portion of the building, this would actually be the frontage. Two, to vary the exterior east side setback from six meters to 1.8 meters for the proposed building, and that was along the frontage on Jubilee. And here, finally, to vary the rear yard setback from 7.5 meters to 2.1 meters for the proposed building, and that's at the rear of the building on Lane. And again, I'm showing this drawing just to show the approximate scale of a small car, and the width of the drive aisle, which is proposed within the variance to reduce from the 7.2 meters to the 6.78 meters, which is typical for a small car two-way drive aisle, and to reduce the parking from, to accommodate 100% of the parking on-site for purposes of accommodating small cars. So again, here's the recommendation. I'll move past that recommendation. Council, staff has also put forward alternative recommendations, of course, that council deny the requested variance, or that council approve the proposed variance but require prior to issuance of the building permit, cash-and-lude contribution of $8,000 per parking space not provided on the site. Now, the reason why we added this is because when we looked at the cash-and-lude bylaw, the cash-and-lude bylaw specifies that developments, variances may be permitted without a development variance permit for reduction in up to 25% of the total parking from the site. Now, that would be the two parking spaces that they're unable to accommodate on the site. But because of the additional variances, such as moving to 100% of the parking provided for small car, and the reduction in the drive aisle to 6.7 meters, staff felt that that goes above and beyond the 25% that's specified within the cash-and-lude bylaw, and so put it forward as a recommendation for council to consider.
Are there any questions of Mr. Paddy? From council? Counselor Dutton?
Just one question. Looking at the parking area at the back, if you get one person with a full-size truck, it looks like your whole backyard is going to be hooped.
Potentially. This site is designed to accommodate small cars, and this development, the owners will have to be forthright in their potential sales in identifying that the building is designed for a small car parking only.
Thanks.
Okay, any further questions to Mr. Paddy? Counselor Jackson?
Thank you. I like this building very much, and what the setback on the east side seems quite drastic, but in reality, it's just for the porches that stick out.
That's correct.
Right. What is the setback, you know, to the building, actually? Say if the porches didn't stick out?
The actual setback, you can barely see here, is three meters. So 9.84 feet from the property line to the front of the actual building.
Yeah, so I was initially quite worried that it was going to be way too close to the street, but now that I see it, I think it's going to be just fine.
Counselor Bell?
I think I know the answer, but I'm just confirming. So the picture that you showed, the last picture you showed of the whole building, you said that was after the feedback was given, right there, that one? So they've incorporated the feedback already, and they've taken those? Because I think, I agree with that, that actually makes the building look a lot nicer, that little bit of detail and depth, but, so they've agreed to that.
Yes.
Okay. So the motion we have on the floor then, thank you, Mr. Paddy. The motion we have on the floor is, as I read out, with all approving those variances, including the parking variances, the only option, and this is on the floor, so if you were to consider any other option that was provided by staff, then we would have to defeat this motion and add an alternate order, approve this motion, as your list. So, is there any discussion with respect to the variance? Okay, I'm going to call the question on the motion that's on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paddy. So we move to the item 6.1, which is the development permit. Mr. Paddy went over that as part of this presentation, so it's all included here. The subject of this motion is that, the subject to the approval of the development variance permit, D V P 2016-02, which we've just passed, council can consider the following: that the council approves the development permit application number D P 2016-2005 for the proposed development of a three-story building with six dwelling units at 545 Jubilee Street and 211 First Street, with all of the legal lot descriptions there, as attached to the May 16th report of the manager of planning. That council requires the D P 2016 contain the following conditions be met prior to issuance of the building permit for proposed development: submission of a stormwater management plan based on the water bounce model best practices, best management practices to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works and Development Services, and the provision of a security deposit for 125% of the proposed hard and soft landscaping costs.
So moved.
Okay, seconded. Okay. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried. Okay, thank you. So we move on to item 6.2. This is the May 9th, 2016, special committee of the whole recommendations, and I will turn that over to Counselor Duncan to go through those recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Your Worship. Item 6.2.1, liquor-related issues slash concerns associated with the location of the Vancouver Island Liquor Store at 5777 Trans-Canada Highway. And the recommendation is that to liquor-related issues slash concerns in the Alexander Whistler Street area, be referred to the C V R D Community Safety Advisory Commission, and the R C M P to consider expanding the crime prevention through environmental design study of the Beverly Street area.
On behalf of the committee, I move. That's seconded, okay. Is there any discussion on that motion? Counselor Jackson?
Seems to be that, as part of that discussion, somebody was going to have a conversation with the owner. Has that actually happened?
I don't know that it has, but I think that that's anticipated to be part of the process of looking at the issues there in a broader way, both environmental design, but also looking at ways to work with the vendor there, to, you know, maybe ways that they can help in initiating. Obviously, there were, there's a lot of things that were discussed at the joint meeting between the councils, which went far beyond just that, and then, of course, understanding that that is a symptom of other social issues that are larger with respect to the fact that we might, we might still have some issues with homelessness and not enough place for people who are homeless, and then other addiction services and things like that. So that was, I think, the reason for having this referred to the Community Safety Advisory Commission, to look in a broader way at what the social issues might be there that have to be dealt with as well, and North Couchin is in congruence with that. So this is really the start of the discussion, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion on this? So I'm going to call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries.
6.2.2, amalgamation working group, amending resolution R 323-15. That council amend resolution R 323-15, which was previously adopted on November 20th, 2015, by substituting it with the following: that the councils of the City of Duncan and the municipality of North Couchin direct their staff to work collaboratively with two counselors from each municipality to draft a process for conducting an amalgamation study along with the citizens' assembly that will make a recommendation to both councils on amalgamation of the two municipalities, with the aim to complete the entire process within the current term. On behalf of the committee, I move.
Okay. Seconded. Okay, any discussion? Counselor Staples or Bell, you might want to comment just with respect to the discussions on this and the amendment?
Yeah, I think it speaks for itself, too. It's been, you know, a process that I feel like we're working really well as a ad hoc committee that isn't a committee, and it's been a great working relationship on trying to make sure that this is done in a really good way, in an inclusive way with the community leading the process. So it's been a good process so far.
That's good to hear. I did attend for a short period of time, the last one, and I was quite encouraged about the discussion and the elements that would be included in the framework for a citizens' assembly, so I'm confident that that process will be very useful for the community, which is where it should reside, so, thanks for that. So any...
When is the next meeting? Do you remember when the next meeting?
I don't think it was mentioned at this point, no. So that was moved and seconded. Is there any other questions or dialogue? Hearing none, then all those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
6.2.3, the draft citizens' assembly amalgamation study process. That council approved the draft citizens' assembly amalgamation study process dated May 5th, 2016, and direct staff to work collaboratively with two counselors from each municipality to oversee the process, with the aim to complete the entire study process within the current term. On behalf of the committee, I move.
Okay, seconded. Thank you. Counselor Staples, yeah?
And just too, that this process is the one that we're working with, so that it is a citizen-driven process, and it removes the political, either political side from it, whether it be North Couchin or Duncan, as well as staff. It puts someone in a position where they're influencing a decision one way or the other, and the study provides all the facts that the citizens' assembly needs to make their decision.
Okay, great, thank you.
Or a recommendation, I should say.
Okay, Counselor Bell?
And I just want to say that this is actually a really big opportunity for Duncan and North Couchin. I think these citizens' assemblies are something that a lot of people are interested in and would like the opportunity to do, but they're complicated, and you have to have two willing partners, well, in this case, you have to have two willing partners, and, you know, you have to have the right intentions, and, so I think it's a really cool opportunity for Duncan. Other communities will be watching this, for sure. It's a leadership role.
I think that's right. I don't think it has ever been applied in this particular context, and citizens' assemblies are used often at a very, much higher level, national and some, or possibly provincial levels, but I think there's examples where it was used in the smaller contexts in communities. So it's certainly something we all understand when we had it with respect to electoral reform in B C a whole number of years ago, but the whole process has always intrigued me, and I think this is really a way, some way to do that, where the citizens really feel like, when they're involved in it, that they're actually having an impact, and that their recommendations that come forward will be well-informed, and I think that's really the best value for it, so I'm quite supportive of it. So, Counselor Staples?
And I just want to clarify too, after reading some articles, that this doesn't mean that amalgamation is done or is certain. What it means is that both councils will be getting back recommendations to see how we proceed forward, and that the community will have the final say in this process.
Yeah, okay. So I'm going to call a question on that motion, and all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Thank you. And I do want to give some credit to the counselors from both councils who were engaged in that. It was probably a little bit of exploration in the beginning, and then once you were able to identify the things to be done, I think it was done very collaborative, so for what I witnessed at the meeting, I thought it was very productive, so. So we move on to reports of staff.
Actually, no, Your Worship. We still have 6.2.4. Grant funding request for amalgamation study. That council direct staff to send a joint request to the Ministry of Community, Sport and Cultural Development for a restructure study grant of one-third of the cost of the amalgamation study and citizens' assembly, and include a copy of the draft citizens' assembly amalgamation study process document dated May 5th, 2016, to support the request. On behalf of the committee, I move.
Okay, seconded, thank you. So again, this is to find the provincial support for the monies that they identify for this kind of restructure. The one anomaly here is that the citizens' assembly is a new process for this kind of study. I don't anticipate, having been in touch with the province over a number of years of things like this with our restructure applications previously, I think they'll see this as a real positive piece, and they'll see the citizens' assembly as that public process, and then the recommendations and other things of the study process as more of a meeting, the needs for the information that has to be gathered. So I don't think there'll be any question that that will meet their requirements for grants, so, but we will find out. Any other discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Okay, so now I get to move on. Thank you, Counselor Duncan. The 2015 annual report, that the 2015 annual report be made available for public inspection by Friday, June 3rd, 2016 at 4:00 P. M., and posted to the city's website, and that the annual meeting to confirm the 2015 annual report, and to take submissions and questions from the public, to be held on June 20th, 2016, council meeting at 7:00 P. M. in the council chambers.
So moved.
Okay, seconded, okay. Any discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried, thank you. Item 7.2, this is with respect to the Sun Bowl 31, June 17th, 18th, for a beer garden request. eighteenth, for a beer garden request. This is a fairly long recommendation. There's a lot of detail in it. Council has approved this for many years in the past, and I don't believe Mr. Devertai, is there anything in it that is changed in any way? Okay, so I won't go through the whole of it, but I will say that council approved the Council Women's Football League Beer Garden Request for Macadam Park for June seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty sixteen, between twelve noon and eight P.M., and it's subject to seven, six conditions, which typically have been put in front of them before, so. Does it affect the noise and operations and things like that? Counselor Jackson?
I like all of these recommendations. I'm just asking a question about number four. I thought that with the new liquor laws, that you didn't have to have a separate beer garden anymore. I am in favor of having a separate beer garden, but I thought that the laws had changed.
Yep, that's exactly right.
I'll allow Mr. Devertai to answer.
You're right, you wouldn't have to, but the the request, if I recall correctly, didn't ask for it to be a mingling. I think they're still looking to operate exactly the same as they always have to, because it's worked well for a number of years and.
I think many people who are anticipating that, unless the circumstances are really quite different, are continuing to do that for their own security issues, they're not their, and their own liabilities, they're not taking the government up on the the opportunity to do it differently, so.
Just like to move the motion. I don't think it was moved already.
I thought I had, sorry.
No, you haven't moved it.
I asked.
Oh, pity pardon.
I asked Ms. Robertson, she didn't.
It hasn't been moved. I'll tell you right now, it hasn't been moved, so you're moving it, seconded, thank you. We had the discussion in advance, so with that, is there any questions or further dialogue on this? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So we move to seven point three. This is with respect to the upgrades to the parking lot at six seventy-five Canada Avenue, which is where the Margaret Moss Clinic is. That council direct staff to proceed with the pruning of the London Plain tree and removing of the maple tree in the parking lot at six seventy-five Canada Avenue as recommended by the city's arborist in an independent review, which was attached in the May sixteenth report from the Director of Finance for a maximum cost of four thousand with funds to come from the Margaret Moss Reserve Fund, and that council direct staff to upgrade the parking lot to address water ponding and safety issues caused by the tree roots at the maximum cost of fifteen thousand with funds to come from the Margaret Moss Reserve Fund, and that council direct staff to amend the financial plan to include these expenditures, expenditures which total the cost of nineteen thousand dollars. Is there a mover? Thank you. Moved, seconded, okay. Discussion, Counselor Jackson?
I see that you're considering the possibility of paving the whole parking lot. The entrance to that parking lot has been endlessly problematic, and because it's right at the entrance of Third Street and Canada. So people are parking to turn this way or turn this way on Canada Avenue, and people are turning in this way and waiting for these cars to go so that they can get into the parking lot and blocking further entrance onto Third Street. I would like to have somebody look at that parking lot and have the entrance possibly off the alleyway, like reconfigure it so that that, what is the entrance now, would become the exit. So that there would be a different entrance either on Canada or off the alleyway, and that the cars would have to exit onto Third as opposed to enter off of Third. So before this is all finalized, I think it would be wise to do that, because I don't know how many times that's happened to me, and I know you're down there a lot, too, Counselor Staples, so you've probably experienced it as well.
I, that could, that could be added as an amendment to for to have have staff consider a re-alignment of the parking lot with respect to entrance and exit.
Parking lot redesign, okay.
But it doesn't change the motion specifically, because all the other things would still take place.
I move that amendment. Thank you.
And to, we want to be clear what the amendment is, so we didn't actually do that. We know what the intention is, but the words aren't there, so so that we would add, and that council direct staff to review the alignment of the parking lot for the access and exit of the parking lot. Is that would be sufficient for you, Mr. Devertai?
Yeah, I think that's pretty clear. We'll have a look at, would you like it to come back before we pave the parking lot?
Yes. I'm not certain whether that's necessary or not, but and I, now we're speaking to the amendment right now, so Counselor, do you have, Staples, do you have a comment?
Well, not to the redesign of the parking lot, no. I have a comment to the initial.
Okay, so let's deal with the amendment then first.
If it turns out that it's impossible for some reason, and I don't believe for one minute that it would be impossible, but say if it did, I don't think it has to come back to another meeting necessarily, but like an email saying we looked at it, and I would be satisfied with that.
Okay, so this is voting on the amendment, okay? So all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. So on the amended motion, Counselor Staples?
So my question is, is paving that, that's already a huge heat sink area when you walk down from there all the way to that, I can't remember which building it is, but it's just like right up on the sidewalk, the building, and it's it's like a little oven in that whole section. And so my concern is that there's just, you've taken away a massive amount of shade and anything that cools down that space. Is there any plans on the redesign of the parking to add another tree that would grow more effectively there, rather than just have like a big open heat sink?
So the the tree that is being removed is the much smaller one to the north. The very large tree is not, is staying, so we're only pruning the London Plain tree, which is the larger one. It will, you know, it's going to lose quite a bit or or certain amounts of its canopy, but the larger one is staying. It's the smaller one that's in worse shape and has to go.
I had the, I had them reversed, because when I was down there talking to them, they said that they were, it sounded like the big one that was going to be taken.
No, the big one's okay.
Oh.
It's actually surprisingly.
It's in very good shape.
It's good shape.
Okay, because I had it completely backwards then when I was down there talking to them. Okay, well, that makes me feel better.
So when the, in the arborist report where they discuss the the details around the pruning for the London Plain tree, they talked about it, they won't be taking any really of the large chunks of the tree. It'll be structural pruning, but in the smaller parts, because they said that that the tree heals better that way, so, but they did say that, I mean, it was only a short of excellent. The tree is in very, it's adapted very well to where it is. It's doing very well, so.
See, I thought that was a maple tree.
That's a London Plain, that's a really big one.
That's my problem. Excuse me, I read the report here, and the maple tree is not in good condition.
No, I was talking about the London Plain, which is the one that we were concerned that that was the one that would be removed. It's not. It's the other one, which I didn't even notice is there, to be honest with you.
It's really small, actually.
Yeah.
Well, it's not really small, but it's much smaller.
It's much, it's less significant by far than the London Plain tree.
We'll be replanting in the place of where the maple is now.
Counselor Bruce?
Are we proposing to repave the whole parking lot or just fix it up?
Basically, your worship, we're looking to repave everything from the stairs southward. So the remainder of the parking lot is in relatively good shape. It's not showing too much allegation and so on, so it's it's only, it's repairing everything of a particular area, but everything north of the sidewalk, or not sidewalk, the step entrance is is not being repaved. We might do a small patch right at the corner. There's a small tripping hazard, a little thing like that, but the rest of the surface is not bad. If we wanted to go with a complete repave, that's possible. That's that's shown listed there for an additional.
There was an additional amount to do.
Eight thousand, I think it was, but.
Okay, so we're dealing with the amended motion, main motion, so any further dialogue questions?
So just to be clear, we're going to prune the London Plain and remove the maple?
Correct, and replant.
And replant something in place of the maple.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I don't know how that, I have no idea how that maple tree has lived. I just, when you see it surrounded by that ocean of pavement, it's just, it's been a miracle.
It's not doing well, that's clear. Okay, so I'm going to call the question on the motion if there's no more question, no more dialogue. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried, thank you. So we move to item seven point four, which is the building statistics report and a motion to adopt or to receive. Thank you, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. So we move on to bylaws. We have item eight point one, which is bylaw number three one four seven, twenty fifteen, the development cost charges bylaw. Now, previously, there was a situation where Counselor Bruce had recused himself.
Yeah, I'll do the same again.
Okay, and if you just state what your conflict is?
Just on commercial property.
Okay, and this is a motion for adoption. We've already been through three readings, that council adopt the development charges costs or cost charges by law number three one four seven, twenty fifteen, a bylaw to impose development cost charges.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries, okay? So we can have Counselor Bruce back in? Okay, so we'll move on to item eight two, which is bylaw number three one three four point zero one, twenty sixteen. This is the financial plan amendment bylaw. The council gives three readings to financial plan bylaw amendment by law number three one three four point zero one, twenty sixteen, a bylaw to amend the financial plan to increase the budget for well number three standby generator, improve traffic improvements for Government Street, and to fund the shortfall for the transit pass rebate program.
So moved.
Okay, seconded. Ms. Solder, do you just want to give a, for the public's sake, a brief description of this amendment?
So the amendments for the well number three standby generator is to move funds unspent in twenty fifteen forward to twenty sixteen to finish up with the project, which is now officially complete. A small shortfall in the transit pass rebate program that council amended the program and and has moved forward some unspent funds from another area, as well as the Government Street Traffic Improvement Project, and we've reallocated funds from a few other projects to help fund that project for the year.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So we move on to reports from Mayor and Council. Is Council got any reports? Counselor Jackson? Duncan? Okay. Counselor Horgan, Bell, you're okay?
I'm good, Duncan.
Okay, I just, I will give a a brief, or at least the highlights of mine. I, on the twenty ninth, I attended a meeting with Mr. Devertai and Ray Carfentan, the CEO of the Duncan, North Couchin RCMP detachment, to go over their performance measures. We discussed a number of items on that with respect to making sure that that we would still see street presence with the RCMP through their patrol and on-beep patrol, and we were assured that that they they would be able to undertake those programs again. I know there have been changes. I was recently emailed, I don't know who it was from particularly, I think it was UCM possibly, asking some pretty pointed questions about the the auxiliary program, and there were some changes made because of instances that happened previously with respect to the safety of of officers who were on that program, and so with those changes, they were asking for some clarity or some questions about how we would support that program. We haven't been able to answer them, and because I, when I reviewed the questions, they were quite very, very specific and and needed some clear internal knowledge, either of the department or the auxiliary and community policing section to answer them. So the deadline for that is the, I believe, the twentieth, and so I'm going to undertake either speaking again to Inspector Carfentan or to the community policing head, Care Lanerals, to talk about what kind of feedback they would like to provide the UCM and the province on that. There there were still some human resource shortages for the detachment, but those were being filled as, and we talked to the inspector about the issues that we were experiencing over on the highway and and the area around the Beverly Street York Road and all of those intersections. So it was a good meeting, and they will adjust some of their things. There was some discussion with respect to the to the prolific offender program, and at this time, the inspector said that he wouldn't require any input or feedback from us on that. They were going to try to initiate or deal with those those things with the the, what do they call it, Section D or District D or District E with respect in the Attorney General on that program. So, but we did say that if there was some feedback or assistance that was necessary for us to the Solicitor General and Section E, that we would, that we would actually be quite willing to get involved, because I think that program's been very, very valuable, and we wouldn't want to see changes that were detrimental to it. So that was the discussion I had with him. We had, of course, the joint meeting with North Couchin Council and the City of Duncan at our, in our committee room on the ninth, May ninth, and I thought it was a very constructive meeting. We had very good dialogue around the, some of the social issues that we were experiencing with respect to alcohol and homelessness and things like that, and I think it was a a good start to discussion, realizing that we're, we're still not there yet. I think, you know, you accomplish things like homeless shelters and places for people with mental illness to live and things like that, but we're, obviously, the job is not done. And so it was good to just engage in that jointly, that discussion together about where we can go. And we also, of course, made progress with respect to the amalgamation study. I just, I was, I've been doing a great deal of things, but they're not all relevant to hear for council, for I.S.T. and things like that, so this morning, actually, I had a chance to meet with the Chair of the Advisory Design Panel, myself and Counselor Staples, who is our council leader on that committee. I think it was a very constructive discussion. They're a very enthused group, and I think they have a lot to add, but we did talk about the the issues of of the constraints and things that we were, we would need with respect to the things that they address, but there was an opportunity for them to be quite satisfied, you know, satisfyingly engaged in areas with respect to how we go forward with our OCP, design guideline, updates and things like that. So I think it was a very good meeting. I'm sure Counselor Staples would agree. And then this Friday, I'm going to be going to the Conference Board of Canada's outlook for for this area, for Vancouver Island. It's the first time they've done something so specific for our geographic area with respect to a forecast for the economy, so I'll find that very stimulating, and I'll try to bring back as much information as I can, which is relative to the city for us, and and then I will be leaving, well, there's a lot of events coming up, and I think some with the First Nations, one on the twenty-fourth, and gathering for the Regional District on the thirtieth, and I think I have something on the thirty-first, ICF board meeting on the thirty-first, and then flying to Winnipeg on the first. So it's going to be a very busy next few weeks, so anyway, Counselor, I have Counselor Jackson.
Yes, thank you very much. May the first, I owe the Legion an apology, and I understand there was some confusion around what time the V.E. Day celebrations were, and I couldn't get there because I think it was earlier rather than later. Something happened anyway, so my apologies to the Legion. And on May nine, of course, I also, along with everybody else, attended the joint council meeting. Yesterday, I attended the celebration of life for our previous commissioner. He was a wonderful man, Bob Shaw, and I shared this council's condolences with his family. And this morning, I met with the Jubilee Community Garden Society to discuss some issues around this year's garden. And I just want to give a heads up to everybody about Sunday, May twenty-second, there's going to be a Fort McMurray fundraiser put on by the Chinese community and May's Kitchen that anything that's bought between twelve o'clock and six o'clock on Sunday, May twenty-second, the profits are going to go to benefit Fort McMurray, so we might want to have Chinese Food Day in Duncan that day.
Right, I I also believe that the new Red Arrow Brewery is going to have a fundraiser for that as well on this coming Thursday, I believe, and all proceeds from that will be also going to Fort McMurray as well, so. So there's lots of people donating. I believe sixty-five million dollars has been donated to the Red Cross since the fire, and that seems like a lot of money, but it's actually still not anywhere near enough, and so donations will, I'm sure, will still be gratefully accepted. It sounds like a lot. It doesn't go as far as I think. So Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, your worship. On Wednesday, the eleventh, I attended the Tourism Showcase down in Victoria on behalf of the city. The DBIA also attended, and Tourism Cowdon. I think that if we look at this next year, we probably actually don't need to have three tables between the three of us. We can get away with two. I think Counselor Horgan mentioned that at the Tourism Committee meeting, but I certainly felt there was a lot of value. felt there was a lot of value in being there because the way they organized it, they actually split up the, they did one of those passport things where people had to come to your booth and get a stamp or a signature. So we actually saw, at the city table, we saw people that didn't go to the DBIA table or to the tourism table. So there was some benefit, there was people that got contact from us. And then from there, I actually traveled over to Vancouver to attend the British Columbia Library Trustees Association Conference. I was elected director to the provincial body and I've been meeting with, along with Mr. Deverti, met with the DBIA on some of the new tourism committee strategies, so, and I believe we have another meeting tomorrow. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. So we move on to new business. We have a proclamation, a request, and this is Access Awareness Day and the proclamation, the council proclaimed June 4th, 2016, Access Awareness Day in the city of Duncan.
So moved.
Moved by Councillor Jackson, seconded. Thank you, Councillor Bell. Any discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. We have item 10-2, the proclamation with respect to Oceans Day and Rivers to Oceans Week. The council proclaimed June 8th as the World Oceans Day and June 8th to 14th, 2016, as the World Rivers to Oceans Week in the city of Duncan.
Seconded.
Seconded, okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So question period. So we don't, I don't see public left here, so questions from council to staff, either with respect to the C.A.O.'s report or anything else? Councillor Horgan?
Any news I have light yet for the poll folks? You said that ITBC were maybe coming on board to...
Sorry, I have nothing written from them, but a verbal confirmation that they'll pay for half of that upgrade, so it's on...
The studies are all done, so we can move that.
Well, the studies are done, it's more than the design aspect and getting the quotes on the actual installs.
Okay, any further questions from council? Hearing none, we'll resolve to go into closed meeting. And I'm going, I have to read it out first, so. That this meeting be closed under the following sections of the community charter, section 91(c), labour relations and other employee relations, and section 91(e), the acquisition, disposition or expropriation of land or improvements. It's moved, Councillor Jackson, seconded by Councillor Bell. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, and a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Councillor Bell and Councillor Duncan.
Sorry, Councillor Duncan, I forgot that was your question.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried, thank you.